All right, good evening. I now call the March 5th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by Earlanger Councilman Tyson Hermes.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, please rise for the pledge. All right, Mrs. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Nicely, present. Mr. Cahill.
Present.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay, you've received a copy of the minutes from the February 6th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, there's no special presentations this evening, so we'll move right to public comment. We have two individuals on the sign-in sheet. Dan Shields is first. If you guys want to go up together, it's totally up to you. There's a little button, I think it's red, that you press. There you go. You got it.
Hello? Okay. Well, my name is Brian Arlenhouse. I'm owner of Arlenhouse Plumbing, Heating, and Air Conditioning. I have Dan Shields here. He is our operations manager at Arlenhouse Plumbing, Heating, and Air. I want to thank the city of Earlanger for allowing us to come in and speak. The reason why we're here is that we have received notice that we are in code violation. And first, I want to apologize that we would never deliberately do a code violation. We run a very respectable business. We respect the city of Earlanger very much, so we love the things that are going on in the city of Earlanger and the beautification. Just, we want to be a part of that, so we would never want to be in code violation. It comes to our attention that we have some storage containers that, on our lot, and the reason why we have these storage containers is our business is growing. It just continues to grow. We love where we're at in the city of Earlanger and want to grow with the city of Earlanger. We have explored different avenues of adding buildings or expanding our buildings. We've had a contractor look at this for us, and we have some sewer lines that are passing through the property that kind of are not allowing us to expand the buildings that we wanted to expand the way we were expecting to. So with that, with the growth, we've added these storage containers. And they're, the size of a semi-trailer, they're just steel containers. They're painted to look exactly like our buildings, to keep them looking really nice and blending in. So with that, I, you know, it's just helping us with the growth of our business, being able to store marketing materials, you know, nothing that is harm for anything, tools and whatnot that we use on a daily basis that come in and off of trucks. So, you know, it's been, we've had some meetings, you know, what is the resolution? What is the resolution? And people from the city of Earlanger are asking us that, and we're just asking, you know, what can we do? You know, our hands are kind of tied at this moment that we don't know what we can do. Is there a variance that's available to us? I don't know that. But, you know, we're asking, what can, what can we do to get in, out of code violation? What can we do to continue to stay where we're at and grow and figure this out? You know, is basically what we're asking. Dan, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
So we met with, I spoke with Peter and Glenn, and Peter put together a meeting where Kevin Quinn and three, four folks from PDS came down and spoke to us last Wednesday. So there's been some discussion, some potential suggestions of some types of grants that might be possible through the city. The variance was discussed also, which I'm kind of looking at the, I guess, the Kentucky State Statute on what we, how we have to apply for that, or at least attempt to apply for that. And then maybe some other ideas that PDS, one of the representatives, and basically I have a calendar to follow up with several of the people who were at the meeting to continue to move forward, but, you know, not going to go over too much what Brian said, but we, you know, we, we made our home here in Earlanger to try, to grow and to continue to grow our business. And, you know, we just, you know, we want, obviously, to be on a fair playing field with everybody and on the same playing field with everybody, you know, as now that our tentacles, our lights are up, we, you know, I drive down Dixie Highway and I'm like, oh my gosh, I mean, I never thought about that. There's this business right next to us that has, every weekend has between six and 10 tractor trailers parked in the front and back of it. They're not a garage. What's going on there? You know, I go by other businesses and they have storage barns in their, on their business, in the front, in the back, and, you know, is that, are those? I guess they're storage barns, I don't know what they are. So just want to make sure we're on a fair playing field with everybody as well. And, you know, our, you know, our goal is to try to get this figured out, you know. Brian talked about the, the looking at the sewer lines and the adding on the building and, you know, and talking with the folks from PDS, you know, who have a little bit more knowledge on that than I do. It, that's a, to try to move some of that, if it's possible, is a darn significant expense for us besides the normal building cost of building a, you know, a type of building we were looking at or can look at. So, you know, that's why we're here, and just to see if anybody here with the city or of council has anything that they want to give us any input on, or thoughts.
I guess I want to first say that we are all playing on the same field here. It is an equal playing field, because you all are not the only, and I explain that to you, Dan. You are not the only ones that have received these types of notices. With PDS now doing our codes enforcement, a lot of the codes that had been overlooked for many, many years, they're being enforced, and they're doing their job. They're doing the job that they are, are supposed to be doing. So they have brought this to our attention, and there's, I believe it's eight different, eight different property owners that are experiencing the same thing, and some have already complied and moved their temporary storage containers. So when we're talking about the fair playing field, I don't know how to be any more fair than everybody that has that issue is getting the exact same notice. You can't be any more fair than that. And we are trying to work with some of the other business owners that haven't been able to make this change. We're working with them, we're trying to figure out, just like we're trying to figure out with you guys, what do we do? How do we rectify this? Because we understand the, we understand the issue, but we can't change the fact that that's the law. That's what the ordinance says. So, and I know there's another meeting scheduled already, right?
Yeah, Kevin and myself are going to be meeting with PDS tomorrow. They've got a, they got the recommendation on the tractor trailer question that you had, as far as parking that on the, on the parking lot in the back, and so we want to review that with them. And then we've done the research on all the grant opportunities and stuff like that. So once I complete that meeting with PDS late tomorrow, then maybe on Thursday or Friday, we can swing back with you guys and kind of wrap that conversation up on those two topics as well.
Yeah, please know that we're not, we're not disregarding your request. We were truly trying to explore all the different options and work with PDS, try to figure out how do we, how do we remedy the situation, whether it's complete removal or, like, what do we do? Because there are other business owners that have already complied. They've already removed their temporary storage containers. So how do, how do you justify forcing one to do it and not forcing another to do it? It's truly a fair playing, playing field.
In the variance you talked about, we talked about that quickly, is they can apply for a variance on this item as well, and then it would go before the joint board at PDS for approval as well. So that, that still remains an option.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
I just want to make a comment that when we, you know, council has discussed this temporary storage unit issue in the past, and whether, you know, how we wanted to kind of address that within our ordinances, and, and we all agreed that they're intended to be temporary, and there's mechanisms in place for if somebody needs it to be at their location longer, there's a process for applying for those types of things. But, you know, we all agreed that these are, the intention is temporary. I would ask, you know, I know other businesses are growing, and this problem's not unique to you all as far as needing more storage, you know, quickly, and quicker than you can, you know, build onto your building or purchase another building. But is it absolutely necessary that the marketing materials and the tools be on-site? Is there not an option to rent storage units somewhere else to keep these things in? Because it doesn't necessarily sound like maybe these are things that, I realize it might be more convenient to have them on-site where you all are already located, but, but, you know, if there's a need, there are other options out there. If you can use the microphone, because people who are listening can't hear if you don't, so that's why I'm just going to ask if you use the microphone. Thanks.
Sometimes my voice carries. But, so we currently do, are under contract that we have been, have storage units up at Earlanger Self-Storage, and we've rented those for now six years. So we have an alternative that we have been using, but to go, you know, they aren't the same A-size as what we have, so we would then be renting 10 of them to 12 of them, and that just doesn't make financial sense. It is close, but it's, it's to our, you know, to our location, as you're probably aware of it. It doesn't make, from a, from a business, financial sense for us to rent, you know, 10 of these units from them at this point. I mean, we'd have to really look at other options, you know, because the cost of that compared to maybe a mortgage on, or a loan note on a, on a, on a commercial loan on something is, you know, that's going to be more than what we, you know, we would spend on something like that.
So Peter and Kevin will be talking to PDS to understand the full, the full scope, and then we'll be able to reach out to you guys on Thursday or Friday with their findings. Okay?
Yes, appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. I'm going to skip over the mayor's report, city administrator's report. Mr. Glenn.
All right, thank you. Just two things to report tonight. Under the legislation's portion of the meeting tonight, going to be approving or unapproving, whatever it might be, the Director of Economic Development Assistant City Administrator position. I just kind of want to talk to the, as to the candidate's qualifications and everything real quick under the administrator report. So the candidate that we have selected that will be recommended for approval is Mark Collier. He's an area resident, he's lived in Northern Kentucky his entire life. He is a 2005 graduate of the University of Kentucky with a degree in journalism, and he spent his, the majority of his professional career in the publication business. He founded Fort Thomas Matters, which then turned into Link NKY. So he's been an entrepreneur his entire business life. He's made great networking connections throughout Northern Kentucky. He's a former Fort Thomas Councilperson as well, and he's got a lot of experience with comprehensive planning through the city of Fort Thomas. And then he's got, with his journalism and his work with Link NKY, he's got extensive experience with marketing and branding as well, which we would love to put to good use. So with that, you know, it's staff's recommendation for approval for our vacated position. In addition to that, the property located at 525 Graves that we've been talking about for the last several months, the city has officially closed on that property as of two weeks ago. So, and will take full possession of that. They're currently in the process of moving, and, not that we're in a huge rush, but they said they'll be out in early April. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city attorney's report. Mr. Gatlin.
Yeah, I'm, most of this I'll go over during the legislation part, some of the legislation we have. But a part of the legislation that we have is through Atlas Air, the KVI. You can see the changes that the state made us make. That is something that the state is requesting that we have a second reading at our caucus meeting, so that will be something that we need to schedule a special meeting for. And the reason for that is that Atlas Air is going in front of the state for the state's part of the incentives on March, let's say 24th, 23rd, something like that, and they need to have the amended ordinance prior to that point. We did nothing wrong with our ordinance, but when we passed the ordinance, the state's tax rate is higher than it is today, so they just needed us to kind of clean that up, and I'll discuss that more during legislation. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, report on capital projects. Mr. Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Facility, the detention areas had the footings poured. The steel structure for the maintenance facility is up. The next step on that will be, of course, the roofing and the siding going in. Floor for the administrative building at the Public Works Facility is going to be poured Thursday. So pretty exciting with everything coming up out of the ground and things starting to warm up, and hopefully we'll see a lot more progress moving forward. The only other thing I have is Regular Blacktop received the winning bid for Northway Circle Wood and Pleasure Isle. That's a milling, resurfacing, and sidewalk project. We are having a public workshop this Thursday from 8:00 to 11:00, and from 1:00 to 6:00 at our Public Works Facility at Jack Shaven, with the plans for any residents who would like to come and look through those, and we can explain any questions they have and that kind of stuff with that project. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Do we have an updated timeframe of completion of new Public Works Facility?
I do not have, I do not have a completion date as of yet, no.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Okay, any other department heads? Ms. Hoffman.
I just wanted to remind everybody that our scholarship applications are due this Friday at 4:00 PM. So if anyone knows an Earlanger senior, it's a $2,500 scholarship. It's a great scholarship, and we'll take them until 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Okay, are there any reports from task forces? Mr. Hermes.
Yes, I'll be brief. We had a Parks Task Force meeting this afternoon, and we discussed the upcoming work at Silverlake Park, which I don't know if we're planning on talking about that with the bid opening or not, but the, the next phase of work that's happening there at Silverlake, and also discussed the upcoming work at Cahill Commons, including the sign and the playground that's ready to go. And, and then we also talked about the Earlanger Road Park and ideas on that and planning for that. That's something that's been presented to council, but it's in its infancy overall. Still trying to plan it out, figure it out, and figure out how to make it happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, anybody else that you could? Okay. All right. Bids, Silverlake Park Phase 3 improvements. Kevin, did you want to talk about those?
Sure.
And then you have the milling, but you kind of already talked about that.
That's, that's a different one, but I'll talk about that one also.
All right.
Thank you. So we had two bid openings this past month. Silverlake Phase 3, we received four bids. John Tumlin and Sons was low bid at $397,141. That is within budget, and we also had a pre-construction meeting with him today and a contract signed, so we expect him to start very soon on Phase 3 of Silverlake Park. And then the other project is asphalt street improvements on Alice Clover, Short Hill, and Thomas Street. We had two bidders. Regular Blacktop was low bid at $315,000, and we're looking to have a public workshop on that project also, March 18th, again, from 8:00 to 11:00, and 1:00 to 6:00, and we'll probably have a pre-con and contract signing on the 19th. And those are, those two projects. Any questions on those projects? Thank you.
All right. We have unfinished business. We have the utility franchise tax. Ms. Kramer, do you want to start this conversation, or who wants to start this conversation? Okay, I'll start it. So you guys have all received, so last, I guess it was the caucus meeting, we discussed this, and we had requested that Ms. Kramer put together a quarter of a percent decrease and what that would look like and changes in the revenue. And please remember that these are, they're very much estimates. You can explain a little bit more about your process in getting these estimates, but throughout the years, those dollar amounts change, so trying to nail down exactly how much it brings in is near impossible because it's different every year. Take it from there.
So what I did was I took our actual revenue received for the utility franchise payments from 2019 to 2020. from 2019 to 2023 to show you the the variables and the fluctuations. So, for 2023, we received $911,040. And basically, that is a calculation Duke sends us all of their total. It's a payable letter. So, any the total receipts that they receive, then there's also deductions that come off of that. What it's service installation charges, and that's based on Duke, what Duke collects. And then they then take that times our percentage, the 3% that we that we initiate. So, these are actual the first column that's yellow are the actual revenue that we've received. And then the reduction would be each of the column over. So, 2.7, 2.5, and 2.25. So, you can see the difference just from for 2023, we brought in that amount of 911. But if we reduced it by a quarter of a percent, we would be losing seven or reducing revenue by 75,000. However, you can see in 2019, we only brought in 709,000 or 709,000. So, if we reduce it a quarter of a percent that year, it was 59, a little more than 51, 59,000 in revenue. So, it can fluctuate anywhere from 60 to 75,000 for a quarter for that quarter of percent.
Mr. Reckers?
So, if if council were to entertain, let's say, a quarter reduction for this year, would do we know if this can align with the like the budget approval process and cadence that we would have for budget discussion? Like, would it present a problem?
So, to answer your question, I want to give you staff's recommendation. Okay? And then we can take it from there. So, staff's recommendation and my recommendation as well. Because we are doing the second reduction in the insurance premium tax to the the second reading is tonight, we would ask that we temporarily pause this discussion on decreasing in order to see how it plays out with the insurance premium tax. It's not it's not easily estimated. So, give us a year, give us a fiscal year to see those revenues and how they're coming in with the decrease, the new decrease. Then we can pick up these conversations. Yep.
So, you're asking to wait an entire fiscal year over less than $100,000?
Yep. Yeah. I think it's the prudent, the wise thing to do. Because it is $75,000. It has the potential to be $75,000. And it is. It does fluctuate. I mean, when we talk about our property taxes, we've this is this these tax decreases are not new conversations for us. Okay, we've decreased the property taxes for nine years in a row. We've decreased tangible tax nine years in a row. We've now we're now taking steps to reduce the insurance premium tax for the second time. We do talk about tax rate decreases. We are very committed to that. However, we take incremental small changes over time that wind up having a big impact. This would be two, like if we did this right now, that'd be two for this fiscal year coming up. And that's not anything that we've ever done. And it's a little more rapid than the intentional small incremental changes that we've made. And then we see how they play out. And then we make an adjustment from there. That would be our request. Councilman Hermes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I hear what you're saying. I mean, the the it's a good point that the property tax rate decrease that we've done most recently is the largest that we've ever done by far percentage-wise. And so, I mean, that makes sense. But, you know, I also say, I hear what what Councilwoman Reckers is saying. I think I hear at least that when I and I want to try to clarify that. If we were to take the the tax rate decrease, how long does it take to actually happen? I don't know that we've ever talked with anyone from Duke. That would be okay.
I don't have a firm amount of days. They just said that they would need a little bit of a runway to, you know, to reprogram the bills and do whatnot. So, I think they would do it in months. I don't again, they couldn't give me a firm date. They just said, hey, if you all decide to move forward with this, give us a heads up so that we can work on reprogramming for the bills.
Okay. That's good. And that answers the the second part of what I was thinking as well, because I do remember in the past also, Mr. Cahill bringing up a very valid point. If we reduce our tax rate for the franchise fee in Erlanger, it doesn't necessarily mean that Duke has to go back and change it.
They do.
But they do.
They do. We've had that discussion. It's a complete pass.
And that is good to know.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Just to on what Mr. Hermes said, I actually looked at my Duke bill during our last meeting, and it's a whole separate line item on your bill. So, you know exactly how mu I mean, I think mine was like $10 on my bill or I don't something like that. But I remember because it's not just Duke that we collect the money that it's a pass through from. It's Owen Electric too. Didn't you say that Owen takes longer? Because their systems aren't?
Just I'm I am presuming they're going to take a little bit longer. They both were very comfortable with any modifications that we would make. We just need to give them heads up. So, I wish I had a firm date and said, hey, they said in 45 days they would do it. I just couldn't get that response from them. I'm sure if we go a little further down this path and we say, hey, we're anticipating this being a part, you know, starting July 1, I think we could probably they could either say, yeah, we can meet that deadline, or they can say, no, it might be more like August. But again, worst case scenario, you're just going to reduce the tax maybe a month or two further down the path than you anticipated.
So, to answer Ms. Reckers' question, yes, it could align in theory. It may not be on your on, you know, homeowner's July bill if we pass it with the budget, but it'll catch up.
That's exactly.
Okay. So, the answer to her question is yes, it could align with the budget.
Sure.
Mr. Reckers?
Is the insurance premium tax received monthly by the city of Erlanger? Quarterly?
Quarterly.
So, would it be reasonable to revisit this in maybe six months to see what what the net impact is so that we can continue discussion?
Sure.
Okay. I just with with the franchise fee not having a dedicated purpose any any longer as we've, you know, disbanded dispatch years ago. It's definitely something that we should be discussing since right now it's a tax for a tax and it does not have a dedicated purpose like it used to with with dispatch. So.
I understand that you keep saying that, but it's been absorbed into the general fund. It's part of our operation. It's part of our revenues. And I get it. And I don't know. I mean, if you're going to say that, then the only solution or only option is then eliminating it completely.
You can wind it down. Other other neighboring cities have wound it down where they don't have it, or they're adding it to pay for said expense. So, it's just something we should be talking about. And if we want to wait six months to revisit, then we can wait six months to revisit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Hermes?
Not a question, but a comment. Yeah, I think we've talked about it before, and I'm just going to reiterate the same thing. I think the reason why decreasing this tax is so attractive is that it affects everybody in the city. Everybody feels that relief. So, it's not just landlords or property owners or business owners. It's everybody who lives in the city. And that that it lives or works in the city. And that is extremely attractive. And I'm sure that's why Mrs. Reckers is and Mrs. Jasper are pursuing this.
I agree with you. But the insurance premium tax also has the exact same impact. Every single person is touched by that. Everybody has to have homeowner's insurance or renters' insurance and car insurance. And so, we are taking steps to reduce the burden across the entire city. So, I don't want that to be lost in this conversation, that there are efforts being made, tremendous efforts being made to take the burden off. I just want to do it in a in the way that we've been doing it, in a very strategic, intentional way. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Hermes said, I I agree that I want something. That's why I proposed the insurance premium tax decrease, because I want it to be something that affects everyone and puts money back in their pockets. I would argue that some landlords do pay utilities. They include utilities in the rent. I don't think a landlord's going to reduce the rent for a tenant because the utility bill went down $10. So, I'm just I don't know that that savings if a if a landlord includes the utilities in rent, they're not going to pass the savings back on to the tenant. So, and that's to me, that's one difference between the insurance premium tax, which is paid directly by the consumer versus the utilities. But I'm also with Ms. Reckers in that this was started because of dispatch, and now we no longer have that. Obviously, you know, we can't go back in time and say it should have been gotten rid of when dispatch was absorbed by Kenton County. But I would like to see an, you know, a name put on those dollars or a purpose put on those dollars if we're going to continue to to collect it. But I'm absolutely for revisiting in six months. I would rather not wait a year.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse. But I do want to bring up a conversation that we had in August, when we were talking about the property tax rate decrease and when we were talking about holistic tax reform. And when we had the opportunity to shift to the property tax rate that because we had seen such an increase in our property assessment, we had the opportunity because we were seeing an increase in our revenues due to just the natural growth and progression of our city. What we've been trying to accomplish all these years is increased property values, increased quality of life. We were seeing it play out in August by the increased property assessment. We had the opportunity because we saw those additional revenues to remove this tax completely. And that was brought up. That was a suggestion. And that was our time to do it. And while I understand that there was the potential because we were doing comp plus 11 that would have then accomplished this, that we had some pushback a little bit. But we we had the opportunity. We had the opportunity to eliminate this tax, and we missed the opportunity. And it's going to be a little more difficult moving forward.
Your proposal was for comp plus 11?
Yep.
Which exceeded the KRS and would have launched a recall. So, whether this governing body voted for that, the public would have reversed it, and I would have made sure of it. So, it wasn't an option back in August to go for comp plus 11. It was never going to happen.
Let's remember that comp plus 11 was still going to be an 18% decrease in the tax rate.
In a year that they did a reassessment and raised everyone's property values.
And if we would have paired it and had the conversation that we were going to eliminate a 3% franchise fee, all of a sudden, that becomes a wise decision.
We had residents emailing us spreadsheets of every single member of council's house and how that.
We had one resident.
One resident's math was accurate.
Okay.
So, a $6 reduction versus hundreds of dollars in increasing. The math was simply not there. So, I hear what you're saying, but I don't feel like it's an actual argument because the public would have never gone for a comp plus 11 increase.
But did they also have a spreadsheet of the 3% franchise fee that every single homeowner, property owner in Erlanger pays? No.
The bulk of the franchise fee in our entire city is paid by our commercial properties. So.
It's on every single.
Yeah, but the bulk of it is paid by commercial properties. So, a homeowner isn't going to have the same reduction as a commercial property would.
That's the I mean, that's exactly the same for any of the taxes. I mean, they take pay the the bulk of the property tax rate as well. I mean, if that's the argument, then I mean, it applies to every single tax that we have.
I would happily put together a presentation for the public if you if that's what you're if that's what you're gunning for.
What am I gunning for?
I'm saying to compare it.
I already presented.
No, you did. You presented it.
I did. Back in August.
But it was gunning. It was never going to happen. The the public would have recalled it. 100% certainty.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to present that to the to the public for them to see it if they need to see the comparison.
Okay. I think it's a valid conversation. Holistic tax reform, not looking at one tax at a time, looking at all of the different tax taxes that we apply to everyone within our city and figuring out what is what is our plan going forward. Any other discussion? Mr. Hermes?
I don't know about everybody else, but I'd like to see that presentation. If you're if you're offering that, Mrs. Reckers, are you this is like a caucus discussion presentation? Are you offering it or not?
I'm going to go with the city's recommendation. We're going to wait six months. And in six months, when we revisit this, let's look at it holistically so we can work with our city officials or excuse me, our city staff to get the correct numbers and and make it a robust presentation. I don't want to push it to caucus when we've got some variable change that's that's in our future. If you're okay with with pushing it to a couple months.
Sure.
Cool. You can work with me on it if you'd like. Project. Okay.
Okay. Are we talking about August council or caucus meeting?
Let's yeah, just let's hold it off. Because we're going to be talking about the property tax rate in August. So, that's probably
Okay.
the best time when we're having those conversations already about the tax rate for property taxes.
The insurance premium tax change won't go into effect until July until July 1 also. So, we won't have anything right away. It's going to probably take longer than six months from today.
Okay. Let's see here. Any new business? Okay. Legislation. Mr. Gatlin?
Hi. We have an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending ordinance 2024-1 in sections 1, 3, well, I'm sorry, 113.0013 of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances to reduce the insurance premium tax to 9.5%. As seen, what is being struck through is what is being deleted. What is being underlined is what is being added. So, in both sections, the insurance premium tax is being reduced from 9.75% to 9.5%.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as ordinance is read? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, please? Thank you. Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Question carried.
All right. Next, we have a first reading, which is an ordinance, the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Airport Towing to provide towing services within the city from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. This is based on the bidding that was done and the recommendation by Chief Raider to accept the bid from Airport Towing. A copy of their exclusive franchise agreement and contract is attached to the ordinance. This is a first reading.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in a minute, it's the first reading of this ordinance.
All right. Next, we have a first reading in Orange, the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 2525, which provided for a credit of its occupational license fee for new employees as part of an economic development project by Atlas Air, Inc., under the Kentucky Business Investment Program. What is being deleted is I'm sorry, what is What is being deleted is, I'm sorry, what is struck through is what's being deleted, what is underlined is what is being added. It's ironically all just to the whereas provisions the state wanted changed. It has absolutely no impact to what we actually are doing, which is providing a 0.75% credit. They just wanted it changed between the county and the state, and then ultimately what that final credit is. So, again, I think this is the first time I've ever amended an ordinance solely for the whereas clauses, but that is what the state has requested. So this is also a first reading.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance.
Next, we have a municipal order, the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. You can see attached is the spreadsheet, which indicates two weed eaters and two backpack blowers, which will be traded in.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Reckers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next, we have a municipal order, the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the mayor's appointment of Mark Collier as Director of the Economic Development Assistant City Administrator, position pursuant to KRS 838080, Section 3, which will be effective April 1, 2024.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Reckers, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome to the team, Mark, if you're watching.
All right, next, we have a resolution of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Erlanger and the Housing Authority of Covington related to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Attached to this resolution is the proposed interlocal agreement. I've sent multiple emails out to council on this. I hope I've answered everybody's questions. I know we may not have received the answers we wanted to hear, but I do hope that we've at least answered everyone's questions. I do want to just bring up, because I think there may have been some discussion of it, and I just want everyone to be on the same page. This interlocal agreement is basically a renews every year for one year, and we would have to give them 60 days written notice prior to that one year. So it's not that we have 60 days to get out of it, it's one year, every year it renews, we would have to provide them written notice 60 days prior to our one-year renewal.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Reckers? Oh, I'm sorry. We did that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Before we adjourn, I need to go back to the insurance premium tax ordinance, and I note that there's a typo in the heading. It's probably not the first time we've had a typo in the heading, but on this one, I just want to clean it up. It sort of threw me off. So I would just ask for a motion to amend, our, a motion to amend so that we will have the proper heading that it relates to sections 113.01 through section 113.03. I think I missed a hyphen there.
Mr. Hermes, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I appreciate, I know I'm being hyper-technical, but I know Sheri and I both want to change that, and I didn't want to change something after we had voted on it. All right, thank you.
All right, are there any announcements for this evening? Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Nicely, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.